Okay. I now call this meeting the Cranston City Council to order. This time I would ask everyone to please turn off their cellphones. The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Here.
Here.
President?
Present.
Yes, present.
Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Please stand and join me in the pleasure allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, in the name of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Under public acknowledgements, are there any public acknowledgements or commendations? None? Hearing none? Councilman, Vice Chairman, Vice President, sorry, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I was just informed over the weekend that our Assistant City Clerk Rosalba Zany's nephew is part of the Warwick North baseball team that just went to Williamsport and has won one game. So, Rosalba, on behalf of the council, next time you talk to your sister, wish her the best of luck, even though they're not from Cranston, they're still Rhode Islanders. So, anyway, Rosalba should be very proud. Thank you.
Okay, on the public hearings, any member of the public like to speak on any docketed Okay, public hearings now closed. Resolution memorializes the General Assembly to enact legislation addressing the proliferation of soliciting on public roadways. Is there a motion made to approve? There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Council Vice President, Santa Maria.
I've just read over this really quickly, and I really am getting concerned about the proliferation of people, as we can say, on the roadways, whether they be panhandling, especially young kids who are on a major thoroughfare, and the possibility of a bad accident, and the fact that a lot of people have called me that it reflects bad on the city to have them poking on the door and asking for money. So, I know that the ACLU thinks differently than we do on this, but I know Providence, a couple of the landowners in Providence have talked to Mayor Loiser about how bad it's getting in the city, so I will be supporting this resolution.
Any other discussion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I brought this resolution to the full council because I've been receiving numerous complaints from constituents while I'm walking the neighborhoods, and phone calls, and emails, and just about everybody I speak to, there's always, this is one of the hot topics for them, and I know that it was a hot topic for Providence on the talk shows today, so it's a problem statewide. And there are a lot of busy highways, and a lot of them are state highways, and in my area, at New London and Sacoan Asit, there's a constant flow of people, and it seems like they go in shifts on these little islands, and there's five lanes of travel almost at that intersection, and those islands are only 18 to 24 inches wide, and you've got people, tons of cars, hundreds of cars daily going right by there. Somebody trips, the people that are out there could get seriously hurt, and I'm concerned with the elderly people being nervous about someone knocking on their windows at those locations. So I think that it impedes the traffic, it's a safety issue. I know that the ACLU thinks we're criminalizing poverty, but I think that that just masks the fact that either the programs that we have are not helping these people, or they just don't want to work, and this is just an easy way to make money. But the bottom line is safety for both the drivers and the people standing on these corners, and they're everywhere, they're in Reservoir, Park, New London, Atwood probably, and most of them are state highways, so that's why I thought it should go to the General Assembly for some guidance. Therefore, I'd ask my colleagues to pass it.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, looking at this, when I read it, when I first saw it, I agree that right now there are no rules and regulations about how people can collect funds on a sidewalk, on a street. There's been so many calls to me, posts on Facebook, emails about how we solve these issues, how we innovatively think about creating solutions to make sure people don't have to beg for money. How do we create jobs? How do we do work share programs? How can we put some people back to work by offering them alternative means than just standing and canning? You know, constantly I'm getting calls that people are leaving water bottles and coffee cups, and actually littering these islands, and just collecting money in shifts, and leaving the stuff where it lies. I never want to see anyone struggle and be in a tough position when it comes to being on that line of being in poverty and needing to collect funds and actually having to go do it, but we need some rules and regulations to create safety. We can't have people standing on every corner, holding signs, walking up to cars on ramps and off ramps to freeways in the middle of busy intersections. We need some guidelines, and again, most of these are state roads, so I would love the state to give us some guidelines on how we can enforce safety, not necessarily stop people from collecting money, but how do we make it safer? So I'm going to support this, and I would urge to be asked, add it as a sponsor to this resolution.
No objection.
Councilman Bots.
Thank you, Council President. You know, my own personal experience is, I just passed someone panhandling right here on Ralph Square, just as I was on my way to the meeting. But as a safety issue as well, coming down the Route 37 ramp, they tend to use the street sign as a hanger for their backpacks and whatnot, so, you know, it does mask, however you want to call it, where the two arrows are there, but it is a, that sign is there for a reason. So, they are taking advantage of that and creating a safety hazard. I also think it dovetails into the problem we have with Harrington Hall as far as, I got about four or five notifications in the past three weeks of sex offenders being assigned to Harrington Hall, and, you know, some of these panhandlers could be level three sex offenders as well. It's, I think it's a problem that needs to be addressed. I know Channel 12 also ran an expose on a, what seemed like it was a racket going on where they weren't actually homeless, but running some sort of, they had guys with buckets and orange vests out collecting money, and then they'd go to a car and dump the money in there, and the car would go to the next one. So, sometimes it's not even the poor that's out there, sometimes it's just people take advantage of the public. So, I really think it does need addressing, and I wholeheartedly support this, and I'd be like to add as a co-sponsor as well, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll make a comment on this also. I co-sponsored this legislation with the Councilman Favecchio, and the reason why is we've seen such a proliferation of panhandlers since the ACLU won that particular case. However, we need guidelines, as Councilman Favecchio said, and the General Assembly has plenty of attorneys, and so does the Governor's Office, and they have the time, and they can put in the effort to search, research other states how they handle panhandlers, and work out some kind of a formula that solves this particular problem. Like I said, the panhandling has become an epidemic, not only in Cranston, but in every city in Rhode Island, and unless we get hold of it and straighten it out, there's going to, somebody's going to get seriously injured, whether hit by a car, or carjacked, or whatever the case is. Nobody can tell me that all these panhandlers that came out of the woodwork are all just homeless people. I think some of them are scam artists, and I think they're dangerous, and I think we have to take steps to make sure that the public is safe. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Council Vice, Council President, may I be added a sponsor to that, please? I forgot to ask when I made my comments.
Okay, please add Vice President Santa Maria as a sponsor, please. Anybody else like to be a sponsor? Also, Councilman Farina. Moving on, reported committees, Public Works Committee's Chairman Asito.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. First item is a resolution authorizing the abandonment of a portion of D Street. This came in front of the Public Works Committee at the August meeting, and recommendation was in the positive, so.
Second, motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? Council Vice President Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Just a scrivener's error on line 23, should be Santa Maria de Prata, it says P-R-A-T-E. That's it.
All right, please note that's an A, not an E.
Line 23, Maria and Rosalba. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That is provided on the applicant. If you just copy.
Well, then the applicant spelled it wrong.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, the next resolution came in front of the Public Works Committee, and
approval was recommended.
Second, motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Steikos.
Yes, this is just a resolution, just like it says urging the Housing Authority to initiate a recycling program. Currently, there is no recycling in Housing Authority properties, at least the ones that I've talked with. They just dump it all 1950's style in the trash, and I think we need to do better than that. So, hopefully this will get the Housing Authority Board thinking about this issue.
Any other discussion? Hearing nine, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Mr. Council President, I, the clerk and the School Buildings Committee from now on will give an agenda on what the city and what they're doing with $18 million worth of bonds that the city is using for the school. So in your packet, council members, you will find a copy of the July agenda and the August agenda, and as you can see, a lot of projects have been closed out from July into August. Moving into August, there's a couple of items that you need to be kind of, I think it's been a problem, a problem, but we've made tremendous project. Obviously, the Cranston West roof, the photo panels are, should be installed 100%, and that roof should be 100% by the end of this week. Stonehill, Glen Hills, Woodridge Roads, fire systems, I'm proud to say that by the time school opens, those will be all 100% complying with new fire code. Edgewood Highlands, there's a big air conditioning project going on, that should be all set with maybe, should be 100% by school opening, and the Career Technical School, the project that was done there, along with the DA improvements that had to be done, is 100% complete. So, $18 million is a lot of money, it is a lot of progress going on, and the projects are really, really moving along quickly, and it's a wonderful thing. If anybody has any questions on any particular project, I can give them a quick update. Other than that, we'll do this every month.
Council Vice President Santa Maria.
Thank you. Just wanted to, Councilman Asito, to let Councilman Asito know that the last I talked to, Mr. Falaski, they've already hooked up to the energy part of Cranston West. The panels are set up into a fashion where they'll be able to get the most energy. The roof passed inspection, so there's, number one, no more leaky roof on the B-Wing students, and hopefully maybe cutting into the energy bill. So, and don't forget those, because of this council, those panels were $0.00. It was a $300,000 grant. Hopefully you can save some energy for the, so, I'm pretty happy about that one. Thank you.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Councilman Asito. Could it be a little more specific? I mean, are these the way their notes are? There's hardly any specificity.
Basically, how that committee works is it's an audio tape that's transcribed, so I have a copy of the agenda, and, you know, I mean, I take notes, as I remember the notes, that's how reporting, but I can ask to see if maybe they can get the transcribed notes sent to the council, if that's what you like.
Yeah, just, it doesn't really tell, it says the, you know, ADA improvements project, it doesn't really tell you, you know, you said that it was 100% complete, but from the notes, there's really not much information.
Okay.
I don't know, I know I didn't realize it was that difficult.
Either, or if they can't do a thing, I'll get a copy of the tape.
So they don't transcribe it?
I don't think they do, no.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It's not our clerk's department that's, you know, 100% on the ball here, and.
I know, so I'm spoiled.
Okay, let's move on. Ordinance Committee, Chairman Akero.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item, 7-16-02 ordinance, an amendment of Title 12, Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Bus Shelter Insurance Sponsored by Councilman Santa Maria, entertaining motion.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second to approve. Any discussion? Councilman Vice President Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. As everybody knows, we've gone through this council when we had the bad snowstorm two years ago. Thanks to Pat Quinlan, we found this ordinance. It was passed by the Providence City Council, is now an ordinance on their books, which says, states that the, shall have liability insurance, which will allay some of the concerns that our council people had of being, standing in the middle of the road and getting hit by a bus. So, they'll have to have insurance, their own insurance, so the city won't be on the hook for a liability suit. So, I have had Mr. Rawson, Mr. O'Neil, and our in-house lawyer, Minority Favecchio, look at it, and they all say it passed legal muster, so I urge your passage.
Okay, any other discussion concerning this? Councilman Akero.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to commend my colleague, Vice President Santa Maria. I know we worked hard on this legislation. I know previous winter, we had an issue with the public coming out, the safety of bus shelters, and who would clean the bus shelters, so I know Councilman Santa Maria held a number of meetings with constituents and patrons of shelters, and also with the bus companies, and the city, so time and the hard work paid off, and I want to thank you, Councilman.
Any other comments? Hearing one? None, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to the Finance Committee, Chairman Steikos.
The first item is a resolution authorizing the city to enter into mutual aid agreements with Coventry, Johnston, Providence, Cituit, Warwick, and West Warwick.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 The next item is the resolution, monthly resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements
recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Then there's a resolution on motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Second. Motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 And finally, the ratification of waivers of tax interest recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to the Claims Committee, Chairman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. We met a week or so ago, and we settled seven cases, and the total was, I think, less than $2,000, so it was one of our better months, and that's all I have.
Okay, no action is needed on this particular committee. Public hearings, any member of the public like to speak on any item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Evelyn Wheeler. I'm with the State Advisory Commission on Historical Cemeteries, and I'm here tonight to urge you to adopt an ordinance that the General Assembly passed an ordinance back in 2011, allowing each city and town to pass, adopt that ordinance. The ordinance is to allow property owners who have a cemetery on their property, if they keep it clean, they can get a tax abatement. Have a packet to pass out, if I may.
Clerk, please get the packet.
I have an explanation, and then also a taxation. I fashioned the example taxation after the Lincoln Stonewall ordinance, and I just changed the Stonewall to Historic Cemeteries. I'm available to help, I did this taxation thing for the solicitor, to assist him, he or her, in any way, and I'm available at any time to help with anyone, answer questions. There are 93 cemeteries on private property in Cranston. The rest of the 114 are either private cemeteries or taken care of by the town. I wanted to be on the agenda to do this, but I know you're busy and didn't get on it, but I have a time limit also, I still have 21 more cities and towns to visit. I've visited 16 so far, and 15 was, it was well received. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes, go right ahead.
If I remember correctly, doesn't the ordinance state now, I don't know if it's state or city, that the heir of the people who are in the cemetery has to keep the properties clean? It has nothing to do with the property owner? I believe when I talked to, I used to talk to Lynn in planning about this, and she always said the heirs of the people who are buried in the cemetery were responsible for the cleanup of the cemeteries.
I honestly have never seen that.
Could we have one of our solicitors check that, check into that? I don't know if it's been changed since then, but I remember we used to have a problem with some cemeteries, the heir lived in California, and he wasn't about to come to Rhode Island to clean a cemetery.
Right.
And we couldn't hold the property owner responsible for it. Does the property owner, I guess another question would be, does the property owner that owns the property now own the cemetery? Or is it?
No, the cemetery is tax exempt, and it does not go along with his property. This is an incentive to get the property owner to clean it up, and, you know, these are the people who have founded the city and the state, and should be honored with a clean cemetery.
I wholeheartedly agree. I know we had that problem with decapitating out old properties with the washout, so, and they took care of that too. So, yeah, if I could just check, I just don't want us to go into legalities if we pass this, so if the solicitor or the administration could check on that. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Asito.
Yeah, through the chair, is there a list that's compiled someplace that shows where the cemeteries are?
Yes, if you go on RIHistoricCemeteries.org, the commission started a database, well, actually, we worked with John Sterling, who started the database years ago, but the commission now has a database with all the cemeteries, a lot of GPS readings, so you can find them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions? One question, have any cities or towns adopted this particular ordinance? Could you tell me which ones?
Lincoln, Narragansett, Tiverton is, has it on the agenda for August. I think there's four more, but I, off the top of my head, I can't, but 15 out of the 16 that I've visited were very receptive and said they would put it, get together with the solicitor, put it on the agenda for passing.
16, well, that makes that 17 out of 18, because I think we're very amenable to the idea.
Thank you.
So, we'll send it to committee, and do the research that's necessary, and hopefully it'll come out as an ordinance.
Thank you so much. And Rhode Island is the first state in the Union to have an ordinance like this, with the Rhode Island General Law.
Councilman Steikos, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this quickly, but there's a thing called a fence viewer that's appointed by the Public Works Director to go look at these, how many cemeteries did you say there were?
93. But, in order to assist the tax assessor or the fence viewer, the cemetery commissions in each town are volunteering to go out. Once an application is received from a property owner to clean the cemetery, we'll take pictures before and after, and then turn it in to the tax assessor.
And what, and they do this viewing every year?
Once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, what if there are multiple abutters?
I'm sorry?
What if there are multiple abutters to an historical cemetery, and they all decide we're going to clean our side of it? Are they all entitled to a?
I do believe all the cemeteries are on one person's lot, isn't it?
I don't know, that's why I was asking. For instance, I have one in my neighborhood, and I'm looking at the map, and this three property, well, three properties that are above it, I don't know, but you said it's tax exempt.
Right.
On the property, so.
I would say whoever gets that tax exemption.
So who, first come, first in? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Akero.
Yeah, I think, Council, on a follow-up, Council, I think you hit on something, suppose the historic cemetery traverses three properties, it's on property A, B, and C, it's the same cemetery, only one person can clean that cemetery and get the abatement, correct? Or can all three clean it?
I would say whoever gets the tax exemption for that, on that property. In other words, unless it's a separate lot with a separate lot number.
Some cemeteries may cross a lot line or a boundary, they may traverse one, two, or three properties. Each property would have a Each property would have a cemetery on it, but the historical cemetery itself may traverse more than one lot. Then which property owner would get the abatement? That's my issue.
I would say the one that gets the tax exemption.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Anybody else from the public that would speak on any?
Council President.
Yes.
Quickly, what committee will that go to?
It'll probably go to ordinance.
Ordinance, okay, thank you.
Anybody else, anybody else in the public like to speak on any item? Hearing none, I now close the public hearing. Election of Officers, Tax Assessment Board of Review, Gina Howarth, a member who wants reappointment, term ending March 15th, 2019, sponsored by Council President Lanning. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, second.
Motion made, second, any discussion on the motion. Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Passman Freeman?
Yes.
Passman Stikus?
Yes.
Passman Box?
Yes.
Passman Raderke?
Yes.
Passman Seale?
Yes.
Passman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Passman Flotter?
Yes.
Passman Flotter?
Yes. Zoning Board of Review, Matthew Gendron, Esquire, a member appointed Ward 1 and 2 to fill in the unexpired term of Adam Sepe, which is to expire July 23rd, 2018, sponsored by Councilman Stikos. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made to approve and a second, any discussion. Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Passman Freeman? Yes. Passman Stikus? Yes. Passman Box?
Yes.
Passman Raderke?
Yes.
Passman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Passman Flotter?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any other election of city officials? I guess the answer's no. Our reported city officials.
Mr. President, there's a report on hiring of special counsel consultants, et cetera, that was distributed to the council members by the law department.
Any questions concerning? Hearing none, we'll move on. Council President Communications, last month at the council meeting, I asked Solicitor Rawson if he could give me an update on the outside legal costs for the city of Cranston on the redistricting, which is now before the First Circuit Court. And at that time, he said he hadn't compiled the information, but he would get back to me, but he's not here this evening, but maybe one of the other attorneys could address my question, which is now one month old. That's a yes or a no answer.
Mr. President, I cannot speak for the solicitor, but I would refer you to the executive report on hiring of outside counsel, and there is a listing for Partridge, Snow, and Han to do with the ACLU redistricting litigation.
Yeah, I see that on the legal expense analysis, and my question, is there any other outside legal expenses that we are, haven't been informed of?
Anything that's been invoiced and paid would be on this report, so otherwise, there wouldn't be anything else.
And to your knowledge, is there anything that's not been invoiced or paid?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I was, since I don't know the gentleman, I wasn't aware he was here, but Matt Gendron is here, would you like to be sworn in, sir? Please, please step forward and the city clerk will sway you into your duties as a new member of the zoning board.
Do you solemnly swear that you are determined, faithful, and honest in support of the Constitution of the United States? This state is a civil war in the Constitution, they're all going to harm each other, the ordinances of the city of Cranston, and they will willingly execute the office of which you have been appointed until another be engaged in the place or to be discharged.
Additionally, last month, I asked Mr. Strom, who's not here this evening, if he could give us a hard copy of the city's estimation on the cost of the state police report, since there seems to be varied opinions on how much it's costing the taxpayers of the city. I assume since Mr. Strom is not here this evening, he hasn't completed that report. Unless Mr. Coop knows of a report being done, or he has any information on that.
Mr. President, Mr. Strom could not be here, but that report is not available.
Okay, I kind of figured it wouldn't be available.
I do not know when it will be. Anticipating the next question.
Okay, I figured about three months from now. Mr. Moretti, do we have any additional information as far as updates on the state police report, the cost?
I have no updates.
Not at this time, okay, thank you. Move on to council member of communications.
Can I follow up on your communication?
Yes, Councilman Akado, feel free.
Just follow up on Council President Communications, through the chair to the administration, I recently listened to some radio talk show and the mayor was being interviewed, and the mayor emphatically stated that all the police suits have been settled. Is that true? Is there any other suits pending through the Cranston Police Department? I guess that would be my question.
Mr. President, this isn't on the agenda, I'm not the city solicitor, I'm not going to get into a discussion about pending lawsuits.
I understand, okay, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Coop would not, does not want to answer the question. The best of my knowledge, the mayor lied, there's an outstanding suit by Captain Gilbo which hasn't been settled.
But did the mayor need that safety manual?
I didn't, I don't listen to radio, so I didn't hear it. The case started in 2009. Councilmember Communications, anybody from the council? Councilman Stikos, you're on the agenda first.
Could get a report on the junkyard on Smith Street? What? Oh, I'd get a report for the, on the junkyard on Smith Street.
You mean the pile of junk?
Yeah.
I didn't know there was a junkyard. I sent that to Public Works when I first received that from you.
Right.
They went out there, they saw that it was an inspection issue, so I resented to inspections, I haven't got an update. They're only working with one minimum housing inspector now, the other one had retired, so, he's kind of backed up, so I'm giving him a few days.
Okay, that's a, that's a pretty major, I mean, it's not just a pile, it's a lot that is covered with junk, vehicles, a storage container, and piles of trash, so I would hope, I regard it as a serious violation that's been apparently going on for years. Didn't you tell me that there'd been a meeting with the property owner about two weeks ago? You emailed me?
I don't, I don't recall on this location. I could, I could check my emails.
Well, that's okay, no, that, it's not really important, but that's why I thought there would be an update, is because you had told me about that meeting. Well, if you could let me know what's happening with that?
I will.
That would be great. I also, this, I don't know who this is for, but I mentioned at the finance committee meeting, I requested the form where the city, every two years, reports the makeup of its workforce as far as race, ethnicity, and sex, and I've since found out the name of that report, which is EEO-4, which I communicated that to Mr. Lopez, but I haven't heard anything back from him, so?
I'll follow up on that.
Still working for the city, or, but it's capital EEO as in equal opportunity, equal employment.
Equal employment opportunity.
Yep, -4, and I was looking for the, it's every two years, and I was looking for the reports of?
I was just informed by the Director of Administration that personnel is working on that report.
Oh, great, okay, thank you very much. That's it for me.
Councilman Akado.
Can I follow up on that?
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Akado, can, would you allow Councilman Asido to follow up on the?
Fine, I'll yield, Council Asido.
Thank you, Council Akado. Director Coop, isn't that a annual mandatory report that has to be filed and be assessable to the public, the EEO-4, according to federal employment laws?
Mr. Lopez forwarded the request to me, I forwarded on to our city solicitor and our part-time personnel office, who got back to me and said that they would dig them out, I haven't done any more research than that, so they are compiling the forms.
So, reports are available, it's just a matter of?
I believe so.
Okay.
And they're, they're doing the research on it now.
Because obviously, if not, that's a violation of labor law, number one. Number two, to Director Barone and/or to Director Coop, I heard one of the responses to Councilman Stikos that the housing inspector has retired, has a replacement been interviewed, or do you have to hold a civil service test to replace that person, or how is that working?
There will be an exam, there will be an exam to replace that. Our, as you know, our personnel office only works part-time, and they are working on it.
Okay, so my question becomes, you must have known that this retirement was coming up by the fact that, you know, years of service, why wouldn't you have kind of anticipated it and had the exam, you know, three months ago, four months ago, so you had a couple of applicants in the pipeline?
Yeah, once?
As soon as this person retired, you know, that person could have came on board.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and I wish we had a personnel director to do that, but oftentimes, people reach the minimum service requirement and continue working for years, if not decades longer, and then sometimes people come along on pretty short notice and say, okay, I'm ready to retire. So, we try to do that as best we can, but it doesn't always work that way.
Okay, Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mr. Barone, first item is the Gladstone Street fence, which is in appalling condition. School will be starting shortly for the elementary students who are going to be walking to school, there are holes in the fence, there are breaks in the fence, the fence is rusted, you know, has the administration done anything to repair the holes or spray paint the fence, or some type of maintenance there? Thank you.
No, the administration has not, Public Works has. Highway performed maintenance on the fence as we speak, and it'll be completed before the start of the school year. I welcome that.
All right, thank you, next order of business. It's come to my attention through constituents in my ward that they have heard that there is no rescue stationed at Fire Station 3, our rescue comes from Station 2. And I just want to put on record that the most calls in the city are on Ward 3, and also Ward 3 has a predominantly senior population, I have five senior managers, so I was wondering, through the chair of the administration, if there's any preliminary plan in place, the mayor and the fire department, to get a rescue possibly three days a week, maybe, you know, I'm not greedy, I don't expect something all the time, but if we could share it with Station 2, it'd be fine, so that's my request. Any, any knowledge on the, on the rescue, and why is it always a two or a three?
I've known about this for about 10 seconds, and I'd be more than happy to reach out to the fire chief.
We have Mr. Blooder here, can you, you want to ask, can he answer any questions?
I'd be more than happy to reach out to the fire chief.
All right, okay, you want to reach out to the fire chief, okay. All right, next item is, you know, I requested this, and I'll keep requesting this, as of, thus far, there has been no street paved in Ward 3, but I'd like to see a list, a proposed list of what will be paved, if anything, so is there any idea of a paving list for Ward 3, when the federal money comes in, what will be paved, do we know?
They're still trying to compile an acceptable list that is CDBG eligible. We have approximately, we're going to get approximately $100,000 for that, so?
Oh, that's good.
They're, they're looking at the streets in Ward 3 based on the paving project.
That's good, all right, thanks. All right, next item, I had two calls from constituents who live on Peerless Avenue near the stadium, there's some graffiti on telephone poles as you, where the entrance of the stadium is, where you drive down Chandler Avenue, hit Peerless, right in that area, there are two telephone poles that have black painted signs on them, look like maybe possibly gang signs.
Would you email me that, and I will have Highway take a look at that scene?
Yeah.
We have some materials that can remove it, I know from asphalt, I don't know if they can remove it from telephone poles.
You might want the police to look at it first, take pictures of it.
Well, if you could email me that.
All right, I will, okay. Wakefield Avenue, I did some cleaning up there on a Saturday morning, but there's a tree branch that is obstructing traffic, it's growing into the road, so if you can get Highway over here to cut that tree branch.
Highway cleared a tree branch obstruction in front of 10 Wakefield.
That's it, okay, good.
They, they've done that, they did that on, before the 18th.
Okay, good.
So, I don't know how it was there on Saturday.
Then I have 11 Garland Avenue, I have a tree branch obstructing a street light, if we could?
Yep, if you could email me that as well, because that's not on your wish list yet.
11 Garland, okay.
Please email me.
And I was out and about on Maplewood Avenue, in front of 135 Maplewood, there's a drainage catch basin that's sinking in the road, it's literally sinking.
I need you to email me that as well, and I'll have Highway look at it.
And there's a huge pothole in front of 125 Maplewood Avenue, I will email you that. And then, you're aware of, I'm sorry, I said Maplewood, I'm sorry, that was Whipple.
That's why I asked the email.
Yeah, that was Whipple Avenue, I apologize. The, the Maplewood is what I emailed you about, the 204 Maplewood.
Yes.
What's your, I mean, the man's driveway sidewalk has sunk because of the drainage issue, there's a huge hill there?
Right.
And what?
Yeah, it's not because of the drainage issue, the guy, the guy parks a tractor-trailer in his yard.
Yeah, but he parks it up the driveway, not at the beginning.
But when, when he goes in the driveway, and I have pictures, he is putting indentation in the sidewalk, and that's where the water is at.
So, you're saying the weight of the truck, you're saying the weight of the truck caused the damage to the sidewalk?
Yes.
That's your opinion?
That's my opinion.
Do we have an engineer saying it also?
Well, you didn't ask the one, you asked the highway.
All right, all right, Council President, I've made my issues, voiced my issues to the administration, thank you for your time, Mr. Barone.
My pleasure, Councilman.
Council President, does he have any more questions, because I'm getting to enjoy this, sir.
Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. I don't know if my answer will be as exciting, Councilman San Maria. I had, I've had a bunch of complaints over the last three or four weeks, but the first was on unauthorized signs and posters on National Grid poles, I'm not sure what we can do about it, I've discussed this with you, Mr. Barone, I don't know if we could just send a letter to National Grid, because I don't know if we have any authority to do anything with their?
I know in the past, if we receive complaints on a certain I know in the past, if we received complaints on a certain location, we would send Highway out, and they would remove the sign. We just don't have the resources to hit every single pole or light post in the city to have somebody do it.
So if we had three or four on Reservoir Avenue, we could identify them and make a judgment decision?
Like I said, when they, you know, I'll get complaints, or somebody, one of the council people bring it to my attention, I could send out someone from Highway, or I know Parks and Recreation have jumped in, building maintenance, whoever's available, they'll go rip them down. But we just, like I said, we don't have the resources to address every single one.
I know. And I did see some on trees as well, which are on private property, which I told the constituent, I don't think we can do anything about that, but I'll try to have them identify specific poles. Did you want to say something? I'll defer to Councilman Seikos for a minute. Councilman Seikos, if you want to...
Yeah, I just wanted to add something about this, because I've also gotten complaints. This was a real cause for Mayor Laffey, I remember, and things didn't blast along on poles. What, do you know what happened between, I mean, was there less people working, or... Because he really went after them, and you'd see the guy out there with a big stick prying off the signs.
Sure they weren't political signs, and he was not going to...
He was very, he was very...
I know he was adamant about that. The only thing I can think of, I was on the council when he was mayor, and he might have did like an executive order one day, he woke up and just got sick and tired of seeing them, and just said, "Stop what you're doing and just go get every sign." I mean, that was back then, and that was, you know, Mayor Laffey. I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with Public Works tomorrow on another issue. I could bring it up, and maybe, you know, maybe they might have some type of, some type of resolution to, you know, mitigate this problem. I mean, it is a problem, and I see it all over it. So I could bring it up tomorrow and see what he says.
That's good. Yeah, no, I agree with you, Steve. I think it's a problem, and if there's something we can do. I know we don't have a lot of resources, but it might be a good thing.
Can we employ the panhandlers to take them down, maybe?
Yeah. We could ask them to do it.
Ask them to take it down.
We could give them a job. If I may continue, Council President, on a few items. I had gotten a list of 25 people on Park Forest that were complaining about their road, so I was just, but I had no idea, I'm not sure what the condition or the rating is of that street at this point in time.
Now, as you know, the way we rate, there's a lot of factors that go into a rating of a street, location, other streets around that area that may need paving. The report is as of December 2015, and when I looked up Park Forest, that was a 61.06. The higher the number, the better condition of the road. The only factor they use in rating that, though, is the condition of the road. So when they have to choose between one road and another, they'll look to see what access road, is it a highly traveled road, you know, that type of thing. We haven't, any of the roads that were paved in this paving season so far were nothing over a 50.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure. I know that there's a water issue underneath that road, that there's, you can hear it during rainstorms. I mean, I can literally stand on the street and I can...
I know we send the car truck there two or three times a year to clean out the storm drains.
I know. Yeah, I know. At some point, maybe they'll, something will happen, and they'll have to fix it, but it is, I don't think it's terrible. I don't think the whole road is that bad, maybe one end, maybe the end that intersects with Summit, but at least I know what to tell them as far as the rating. And my last item was on 15 Capuano. I had spoken to Solicitor Marcelo myself a couple of weeks ago, and evidently, the bank has never responded to our request to deed over, have them deed over the property for $1 so that we could do something with it. So I'd really like to see, I don't know whether it's in such bad condition that we could condemn it, but we, I'd like to see us do something, file some court action to try to move them along.
Probably about six months ago, maybe nine months ago, we sent the inspectors in, because we were going, we were thinking of buying it and using CCAP money, and we would rehab the house and then sell it. The house, the building inspector did condemn the house, so the expense to do that was far greater than the financial resources that CCAP has. That's when we sent the letter to the bank that we were going to purchase it, and we were going to just demolish it.
So is there any way to speed up that process by filing a condemnation action?
Well, he said, because I had asked him, I told him that he wanted to hire a special counsel, and he said he could potentially put the property in receivership. That's what they do in Providence.
I know.
And this would require a firm that specializes in that type of action. So that's the special counsel you would need to hire. I asked him, I said, "Would that incur further expenses?"
Of course.
And would that have us, you know, can we put that on a lien? And he said, "No, that action would try to take the property from the owner and have it owned by the city."
But we would have to pay the legal expense to do that.
Well, I asked him, he said, "No," so...
To file the action?
I haven't either.
Okay.
But...
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that, but I'd like to see the bank pay for the condemnation. If they're not going to, they have an easy out, all they have to do is deed it over. But anyway, if you could follow up on that?
I will.
Thank you.
Councilman Asido?
Thank you. Just to follow up on Councilman Favecchio's question. Director, we have two sources of funds for road paving. Is that not correct? CBGG monies and money allocated in the budget for street paving, separate and apart from CBGG?
Well, the CG, the CDVG dollars there, the street has to qualify, it can't be any street.
That's correct. So as I recall in the budget last time, that there was, you know, monies that would go through CBGG and the department that handles that, and that what we put in the budget, right?
We don't, at budget time, we don't know what we're going to get from CBGG.
Right, right. But we have two separate lines, is what I'm saying. So regular street paving is another line in the budget. So then my question would become, well, if you're doing a ranking system, do you have two ranking systems? One for CBGG money and one for neighborhoods that don't qualify for that? And then you rank the streets in both sections? Does that help?
We don't have the ranking system for CBGG. They do. They tell us what streets we can pave. We give them a list of streets that we want.
How do they communicate that to you?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Public Works.
So you're saying...
I just know that we can only pave certain streets with CBGG funds.
Right. But who communicates that to Public Works on which streets get paved from CBGG?
I'm not sure, Councilman.
Can you just find out? Sure. For us, Director. So is it somebody internally?
Basically, you're asking who determines what CBGG streets get paved?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Because those monies come in through the city to the department that handles that, and then they go ahead and tell you to fix a street. So my question would be, well, if a street doesn't need to be fixed because it's good, why are we doing that, or is it going to the next CBGG street that needs to be fixed? So on and so forth. See what I'm saying?
Well, I know, I know Public Works knows what streets qualify for CBGG, and it doesn't have anything to do with the condition of the street, it's the neighborhood. So once we get those funds, then we look at the streets in that neighborhood that need to be paved.
So he's got a list for that, or Public Works has a list for that?
We have, we have a list of every street.
I understand that, but I guess I'm trying to get my hands around the CBGG money, because I'm sure Alpine Estates doesn't qualify for CBGG, but, you know, and I'm just trying to find out here if there's two separate lists. So in other words, I thought that there's one major list in the city of a ranking 1 to 8 trillion. You know, this is the worst street in Cranston, this is the second worst street, this is the third worst street, and, you know, from the monies that the city lots, I'm sure we're working on those. But now, you kind of said that there's CBGG money, and that wouldn't work if you, you know, your top 10 streets weren't in CBGG areas. So you'd have to skip all the way down to maybe number 90, 100, or whatever, to redo those streets on CBGG areas if you had the CBGG money. See, so it's kind of confusing, you know?
Yeah. There's, there's one report that lists every street in the city.
Right. From Beta Engineering.
From who?
Beta Engineering. Okay. I guess.
And it lists every street in the city, and it gives it a rating.
Right.
So when we take budget money, we determine what streets need to be paved.
Right.
We know what the distressed areas are that we can use CBGG money from.
Yeah.
And when we get that money, we look at the same list, and we just go to those streets and see what the rating is, and that's how we determine what streets get paved.
So then again, so if you have...
It's not a separate list. There's one list.
All right. So if you have a top 20 list, and the first 10 streets don't qualify for CBGG, you keep going down the list until you find a street that's qualified for CBGG, correct? That's how it's supposed to work technically.
Again, we know what streets qualify for CBGG money. It's all on the same list. So when we get the CBGG money, we know how much it's going to cost, we can determine what streets are going to get paved with CBGG funds.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of, these are new, so I didn't get a chance to email you today. Casa Delano, the restaurant on Elena Street, corner of Elena and Atwood. There used to be a sign in the parking lot that was either wiped out by a car or was taken down. The stanchion was left sticking out of the ground, and two of his customers got flat tires. I was wondering if Highway could go when... No, it's on, it was one of our signs. You know, the stanchion gets hooked into that bottom plate, that bottom plate sticking up, and of course, a couple of flat tires. Also, the junkyard...
Will you email me this, Councilman?
I will tomorrow morning. Just want to get them on record. The junkyard recycling business in the back of the Hamilton Building, when they came before us, this was a few years ago, they promised us they would block out the junk and keep the junk below the fence level. There was canvas around the fence, that's all ripped off, needs to be replaced, and the junk has to stay below the fence level. They were told that.
So should I go to Safety Services and Licensing?
Yeah, but can we have inspections look at it?
Sure.
Because it's supposed to be, there's supposed to be canvas, the canvas is all ripped, and it looks horrible. But if you could check it out.
And that is part of the agreement granting their license?
If you want, I can pull the minutes from, it was...
Well, no, I just, I mean, what the inspectors will do is they'll give them, like, seven days to fix it.
Yeah.
If not, they would have to come for showbores.
They have enough room to spread it out, you know, keep it in a big pile, and it, you know, it doesn't look good. And the last but not least was amnesty for next month. Are we on schedule for amnesty?
Yes. Yes, it'll be on, we don't like to call it amnesty, but it'll be on Hot Topics.
The amount that they pay for it when they don't pay amnesty?
It'll be on Hot Topics in the next day or two. The homeowner needs to call Waste Management.
That's a 1-800 number.
The 1-800 number, and schedule a pickup. They have three items that they can pick up at no charge.
Can you give me the dates on a...
It's September 1st or the 30th.
September 1st, so the whole month?
Yes. On their date. It'll be, it'll be picked up on their trash day, but by a different truck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Council Communications? I want, since I'm also a councilman.
Because I do my constituent affairs for all council members, not just the selected few.
Thank you so much.
Some may believe.
For your attendance in this business. Going back to the budget hearings, we talked about the CDGB money.
BG.
BG. The playground on Florida Avenue and Southern Street was built with that money. However, I look at the map over there, and that's not a low-income area at all, not even the 50%. It's a high-income area. Could somebody explain to me how you're using that money, CDGB money, to build playgrounds in fairly affluent areas?
Parks and Recreation Director was here. I don't have an answer for that. I could speculate, but I'm not going to go on record as speculating. But I'd be more than happy to...
I'm just curious.
I'd be more than happy to reach out to our CBGB and...
We've been expounding here tonight about how we're taking care of low-income areas, and that came to my, and I'm thinking about that, and I'm saying, "Wait a minute." Because I lived on Florida Avenue, so I'm familiar with the area. And I'm saying to myself, "That playground was built with the CDGB money, absolutely built with it." Councilman Papalakis sponsored it, he should know. But all of a sudden...
I swear to God, like, 99% I know the answer to that question, but that 1% I just don't want to commit. But I will have an answer for you by tomorrow.
And the problem I have is everybody's got an answer for me tomorrow, or the next day, or the next month.
Okay.
But you, you might believe, some of these others are a little suspect. All right. I'll wait your call.
Council President, can I just add one thing?
Yes, please, Council President.
My rookie year, my second term, I asked for Florida Avenue to be paved from one end to the other, and I was told it did not come under the CBGB money.
Well, maybe only playgrounds come under that money. I don't know.
So...
It's kind of curious.
I was told by Director Lopez that it's not eligible for CBGB money.
All right. Any other Council Communications? Hearing none.
There is none.
Introduction to new business?
City Clerk. Proposed ordinance 8-1601, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, change of zone for 1353 Park Avenue to be referred to ordinance committee for hearing on September 15. Proposed ordinance 8-1602, amending Chapter 10.28.150 of the Code of the City of Cranston. In title places where parking or stopping is prohibited for the library branches during non-business hours to be referred to ordinance for hearing on September 15. Proposed ordinance 8-1603, ratifying the school committee's amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Laborist District for local 1322 bus drivers and mechanics to be referred to finance for hearing on September 15. Proposed ordinance 8-1604, ratifying school committee's amendment of the collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Laborist District, local 1322, the trade people unit, to be referred to finance for hearing on September 15. Proposed ordinance 8-1605, amending Title 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally from Narragansett Boulevard at Harborside," to be referred to ordinance for hearing on September 15. Resolution loan order authorizing the borrowing of up to $29,500,000 from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank for the Triton Ocean State LLC project, to be referred to finance for hearing on September 15. 10-year commercial incentive application from Berkeley Acquisition, Inc., Dean Warehouse Services, Inc. at 2,000 Plainfield Pike, to be referred to finance for hearing on September 15. Petition from National Grid for pro-location at Clearview Drive to be referred to Public Works for hearing on September 12. The following claims to be referred to claims for hearing on September 12. Personal injury claim of Mona Lisa from alleged incident on October 1, 2013. Personal injury and property damage claim from Ara Bohigian from alleged incident on August 3, 2016. That is all I have.
Is there motion to refer all matters as read by the City Clerk?
So moved.
Motion made in secondhand discussion. Hearing nine clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. The next city council meeting will be Monday, August 22nd, 2016. I'm sorry, September. Is there a motion?
I have a question for you, Council President.
Yes.
So committee meetings are going to be starting at 7:00, is that correct?
That's correct. Committee meetings will be starting at 7:00 P.M., except for claims, which will start at 6:30. Is Councilman Favecchio, is that okay?
That's fine, Council President. One other question, there was miscellaneous thing on the clerk's desk, I thought, was that...
That's just for the, I mean, I can read it in, we just received the executed copy.
Okay.
Of the contract for the city workers.
I didn't know if we had to read that in. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Now adjourn.